...committee for September 3rd. Let the record show, all of them are present with the exception of Anastasia and Panis. Approval of minutes for previous committee meeting Tuesday, August 13th. I'll make a motion and I get a second, second by Ben, all in favor? I oppose unfinished business. This is gonna be good. The mayor, Irving Parkway, we were hoping to be able to get an update on Irving Parkway and what would be required, or basically just to get an update and see if the engineer was ever able to venture over to Irving Parkway.
So Irving Parkway, you guys were just looking to have that patched in?
We were looking to get it patched and in the emails from the resident, there was mention of what could be done to allow that road to be continuously maintained. So if it ruts up again, is the city gonna go over and patch it again? I made the example of who plows it and the mayor stated that we do. So if that's the case, if we plowed that road, then could we at least maintain the potholes on that road?
So it was planned in July.
Right.
So it's unimproved, I guess it's just been overlooked.
Okay, so it's unimproved, it's been overlooked, so is it something that should be regular or?
Are the neighbors looking, are they, would they like to petition the city to do that street?
I talked to one of the residents, they did not say anything about petitioning. I think in that regard, I felt the same as them, that it was granted as a paper street. When you look at the rules on that, it requires the city to pay a third and then the residents are responsible for two thirds?
Yeah, there's not many residents on that road.
Correct, there's only two, so I mean, again, me personally, just advocating for them, why would we require two residents to pay for an entire street when it is a plowed street? So people use it on a daily basis, there's access to it, there's no closed off areas or anything like that, it is a legit street, whether we call it a paper street or not, it's even on Google Maps as a street. So to me, as long as it's maintained, I think the residents would be happy.
It's, not being incorrect, but it's an unimproved street.
Right.
And there's no reason that we can't keep it, the potholes patched and we plow it. I don't know if it's street red, I don't know if it's sweat, probably not. There's no reason why we can't keep up on keeping the potholes patched and continue to plow the street like we've had.
Okay, alright, well I appreciate that, Ben Mayor, and thank you Ben.
So, you know, I wanted to just bring up that it is a very heavily used, unimproved street as it kind of intersects into my ward. And so it does, you know, it's not a dead end, a lot of unimproved streets are dead ends that have very limited traffic, this, you know, it connects into Irving, it wraps around, I think it's 12th Street there, and so, you know, it does get heavily used despite the fact that there is really only two houses on that. With that being said, I know the residents were especially concerned with the drainage aspect of the street and what, as far as the potholes go, and you know, again, our engineering department at least annually can keep up on, keep up on it, is the potholes to fill right into the driveways of the residents. And that seems to be where a lot of the concerns are, it causes huge, you know, because there's not proper drainage, there are huge puddles, my family and I go by on our bikes, we can see it all the time. So I know that's, that's a concern, I don't think they're asking for us to go with the entire extent of paving and making it an improved street, but yeah, if we could just please keep up on maintaining it. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions, comments? Alright, moving on to levy reaccreditation.
Would we talk on this?
So the levy reaccreditation, we put that out to bid, we did the scoring, we had a firm pick. I think in the mix of all of that, we wanted to reach out to our neighboring communities that also benefit from the levy system and are kind of vested into that Allegheny Port Bill. So in doing that, we waited for response from them, if I'm correct, Mayor, we waited for response from them, but didn't hear anything. That was three years ago, so now if we wanted to pick up where we left off, we would need to put that out to bid again and go through that scoring process again. We did have funding set aside for that, I wanna say it was a hundred and, I don't know many, but I wanna say it was like a hundred and thirty something thousand. What was it?
One sixty.
Yeah, one sixty eight, I think it was, one sixty eight.
I'm sorry Brad, I was, I was lost in thought there. Did you say that we did go out to bid, but nobody bid on it?
No, we had, we had four bids for that.
Okay, for the levy reaccreditation?
Yes.
Okay.
And we went through the scoring and all of that.
Yep.
We had a firm pick, we talked with them, we did not secure that because we wanted to see if other parties that were gonna have to go through this process, Allegheny Port Bill, wanted to join forces and say, hey, if we're gonna have to do this, if you wanna go through this together. And there was a breakdown in communication there, and then next thing you know, three years later, and there we are.
Could I just follow up with a question of, is this something that every community that is along the Allegheny?
Every community river? Well, there's a lot that goes into it.
Salamane?
It all depends on if their levy system is accredited or not. So there's two different earmarks to a levy system, there's certified and there's accredited. Certified, there's no problem, our levies are certified. Now, if we have a flood and we have damage and we want FEMA to give us money to pay for some of those damages, our levy system would have to be accredited to meet their FEMA standards.
Mayor, do you have any, I'm sorry Vernon, I just wanted to follow up with the mayor. Do you have any thoughts on, I mean, these are your different people, different mayors and so on, I don't know if this is something that should be coordinated more with county legislators as well, I, just, just from, they represent this area and this is a, this is a major project potentially?
We can do that, I did have a conversation with Greg Pearl about this and he said, well, they don't have many types in their Allegheny zone, and I had a conversation with Tony Evans and, and he was gonna have a conversation with the, his board and get back to me, okay? And I, I've seen him several times, that's all he had, better get back to you on that, so, it's kind of, we have to get going on this, so.
Sorry, we can't just, you know, look at the levy system that's within the city limits 'cause it expands outside of that, so just doing the city of Olean's levy system isn't gonna get us, part of it goes into the town of Olean, town of Allegheny.
Have we talked with the town supervisor?
Is there, what do we have in the town of Olean?
I think the northern part of Olean group.
Okay, the short amount, okay, I have that.
I think so like Greg Pearl would be correct in saying like they don't kind of believe that the village of Allegheny has anything, but the town of Allegheny does, the town of Olean does, Port Bill does, but not as, it's not connected directly to us, I believe there's a break somewhere there. But anyways, there's, there's more parties involved than just us when it comes to the levy system that protects Olean.
So Brad, are you saying that if we just did our part, then we could not be accredited?
Well, we could do our part, but it would have to expand into the town of Olean, town of Allegheny. Do you see what I'm saying? I suppose if you wanted to pay for that, sure, but...
Well, I was just saying, so we can't just do the portion that is the city of Olean and get accredited, that's what you're saying, right?
Yes, I believe that's correct, yep.
Okay, so then it behooves us to have those, the town of Olean, town of Allegheny on board to maybe help pay for something because they should be vested in it also, so it's kind of here. And if we don't do it, this is where we could run into the issue with having, everybody having to pay for flood insurance?
Everybody within the five hundred year flood lane would then be forced to have flood insurance.
Which is a large portion of Olean, right?
It's a significant amount, yeah.
Okay, so we've been talking about this for a number of years, so definitely seems like it should be high on our priority, even though we haven't had like a deadline, but I don't know if we wanna get locked into when we're at the deadline.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause depending on the, on the needs of the levies, it could take some time to not only do, but also fund.
Thank you.
So, I'm having a hard time swallowing that the city of Olean can't get accreditation if the town of Olean section isn't done. If that's the case, then why are we doing anything at all? How did we get the accreditation in the first place if the town of Olean and the town of Allegheny don't have the accreditation in the first, in the first place?
Well, I think they did in the first place.
They did, they let it lapse so that they care.
Right, it's the same, yeah, it's the same as FEMA's updating their levy system maps.
Right.
So we have to verify that it meets, our levy system meets FEMA standards in order to be covered, you know, so like right now, they're certified, but not necessarily accredited to that level.
We're all in the same boat in other words.
Yeah, oh yeah.
We're just the only ones talking about it.
Okay, so...
They use language like a hundred year flood.
Oh yeah, I've had numerous of them on South Nineteenth and Washington Street here over the past two years, so. Okay, so, I don't know, well, frankly, if the surrounding towns aren't concerned and we need their support or their collaboration in order to get this, and they're not concerned, then, I don't, I don't wanna be holding tomorrow's paper, but there's a lot of thoughts that go through my head, so it just doesn't make sense.
I think we have a, I'm not seeing it the same way Brad, I'm sorry Brad, but I said it on the meetings too, and there was no, there was no mention of, they had to be on board with us. So I think that's something that should get confirmed.
Yes.
You know, and if that is the case, then there's no reason why Olean should put the bill for all of that.
Right.
So, and I, I, there's a, like I said, there's a, either misunderstanding on my part or misunderstanding overall on what we have to do. We have, we have to protect the city of Olean. And if we, if we don't get our levy system accredited, then when they develop the new maps, then a good portion of the city will be required to have flood insurance. So, but it's been a while, we'll have to confirm that, that it's basically all or none type of situation, and I don't believe it is, but we can have a discussion somewhere on this Brad, and get to the people and get that clarified.
There may be no deficiencies in the levy in those, in the town of Olean or in the town of Allegheny, so they, they may have nothing to do, you know, to meet the, to meet the requirement. But from what I understand, we'd certainly do within the city.
I guess I was gonna just ask Mayor, do we need, do you need the council to pass formal action to, you know, request that you set up meetings with these communities and, or you and Brad just will take that and get back to us in a while?
We'll get back to you on this and then we can make a plan to attack that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious on, on whether or not it's basically what you said, all or none, I mean, that, I guess, basically where we need to start with that and then go from there before we go any further with designating any more funding or looking for anything else to go further with this, so I guess we can hold off on this and keep it on unfinished business until we come back and say a month, is good, Mayor?
Sounds good, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to audio and video surveillance? I think this was John.
Yeah, and I've gotta do some more work on this with Tiffany, so I'm not really ready to bring this forward unless there's any updates from the mayor on this.
I've asked Chief Richard, said you reach out to the current company that we're with for the cameras to see if, you know, number one, if audio can be added and at approximate cost, as this is probably the unit that we're gonna have to go up for, for events, so I think I'd love to see if he's got back to you for that, so.
Hey Steve, John, are you talking about the cameras inside the city building?
Both, so, so two different things, right? We had talked about upgrading the city building, do we have audio on the external cameras, Chief?
Sure.
No. I mean, I could even see where it would be beneficial as a government building to have audio, you know, visual and audio on external cameras as well as internal cameras, Alderman, Anastasia, but then also, we at one point had talked about looking into some simple economical video surveillance of some key park facilities too, right? So we had discussed that and that I still would be in favor of, even if it was something that was on a, not quite a trail cam, but even if it's on a closed loop system, doesn't necessarily give live stream, but would give recording should someone damage the dog park equipment or playground equipment, you know, this stuff costs a lot of money, so I still would like to see if there's a solution that's a little bit more affordable than, than what we were presented with previously.
Yeah, generally as, I don't understand why we need audio, but can't we just go to home people and buy a Ring camera? I mean, those are fifty, sixty bucks to do the job, so I wouldn't wanna spend thousands of dollars on audio.
Right, agree.
Anyone else? Alright, I guess we'll postpone that, a month, good John?
Yes, please.
Alright, postpone that for a month, I'm sorry not postponed, but just keep it on unfinished business and we'll bring it back in a month. Moving on to new referrals, we have Queen Street Railroad Tunnel. I know this was brought up, that the tunnel was basically insufficient with the lighting, there's none, and there was no guard rail at the top of the tunnel for falling gravel and there was another thirty.
Also the railing that used to be up there for people.
The railing, yes, and the railing, so I don't know who was taking lead on this though, is this yours or is this Panis?
Panis, that's his, that's on Long Town Street, me.
Yeah, Tiffany, do you recall this?
I'm pretty sure it was Panis.
Yeah. He put it on after John Gaetz reached out to her.
Alright, so Mayor, I remember he stating that the displeasure and the no lighting would by any chance, did the city get a hold of?
Uh, no, no, I dropped the ball on that. I've asked Ben to set up a meeting with the railroad so we can discuss these issues.
Alright, so we can move that to unfinished business and come back to that in a month. I knew this would be a fast meeting.
Is that, did Irving Parkway come off?
Irving Parkway?
Or is that still on?
Yeah, yeah, that's coming off.
That's off?
That's off.
Okay, it is not on the machine.
Yes. Alright, moving on to Front Street Railroad Bridge, that one, I had numerous basically rhetorical questions for the city, but a lot of them, it'd be nice if we could get them answered today, I'm pretty sure a lot of residents would like to know, I mean, I would like to know, and I'm just gonna read off what I sent in the email and then we can just come back and answer them one by one or whatever, but basically I wrote, asking, what is the process the city takes when the bridge on Front Street is hit? And this is from either, was it north-south or east or west, north-south of the bridge? Do we hold the driver accountable? Are they cited for any damages and issues that are caused? Are they cited for any issues with their rules of the road that they're disobeying? Do we, do we ever contact the railroad company to have them inspect the bridge? I know I was gonna take pictures, but when you look at the bridge now from Front Street heading towards state, the last truck that hit the bridge was somewhere between August nineteenth, August twentieth, that truck definitely dented the fins of the bridge, they're all now folded over, so to me, that tells me, one, that that truck had some speed and did not stop at that stop sign, and so those are just things that came to mind. And then on the flip side, you know, is there adequate signage? Is there too much signage? One, I've had a CDL, I think Anastasia had a CDL, and sometimes when you're driving down the road, as you're trying to read these things and you're paying attention to pedestrians and other vehicles and stuff like that, you may miss a sign or two, so do we have too much signage, is there not enough signage? So I just wanted to circle back to the city and find out, you know, if someone hits a bridge, what is the process, how do we take care of that, do we get it inspected? I would hate to see down the road, you know, these, this bridge has been hit numerous times and then you have a train come by tens of thousands of pounds and then come off the track and there were another Ohio, you know, I don't wanna see that knowing, so.
Chief, what's up?
Chief Richard, I have several answers.
Alright. So that bridge, we call it railroad out of the time there's an accident, the drivers can be typically for exceeding bridge clearance, being off a truck route, film a bit, traffic control device, that bridge never moves. We always have it inspected every time someone hits a, that's the railroad's bridge, so if they wanna go out to the insurance company, whatever, whatever damage that's up to the railroad, but it is called, they are called every time someone hits the bridge.
Okay.
The one that you're talking about, that guy that was a dairy truck, I believe, his GPS sent him that way, so.
You got it.
Okay.
Alright, and then I guess for DPW would be the signage, whether or not we have enough signage, do we have too much signage, do we need to install signage, maybe in multiple locations, maybe up near parking shop and then somewhere further down in the middle, then maybe a big light or beacon that says, hey, stupid stop, you know, something that says, don't hit that bridge, I don't know.
So I mean, quick look at things, we're in compliance with the UT, their sign regulations. There are some things that are, could be included past the surround, some kind of recommendations on there for some countermeasures, is the way they label it, but what we have in place right now is adequate to meet the standards.
So, does anyone know in the last five years, how many times it's been hit?
Signage can tell you over the last two years.
Oh, perfect.
So far this year, it's been hit four times, and only twice, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
I didn't go five years back.
No, that's, listen, six times in two years, right?
Yeah.
That's quite a bit, I mean, clearly there's something wrong, I don't think it's necessarily us, but if people can keep hitting our bridge, there's, we gotta, I don't know what else to do other than to say, you know, I like your idea, but you know, it might not stop stupidity as you hope there, right? Because first of all, they're not supposed to be down the road anyways, right? Is that correct?
Right, I mean, unless they're a local delivery, they shouldn't be off the truck route, I believe at ten thousand, right?
So even if the GPS sent them that way?
They're still responsible.
Right, okay, so I agree, I think we need to do something, I'm just not sure what we need to do to make people stop hitting the bridge.
Vernon?
Yep.
So we talked about this when Robert Thompson was still here, and first off, before that truck hit that bridge, it passed three no truck route signs, two low clearance signs, and a stop sign, so I don't know how much more you could have done to warn that driver, and that's been the case. It's also been talked about that typically as a resident there, we see more accidents coming from the hospital to the stadium as opposed to the other direction where they turn, there's one block of clearance and they can clearly see the bridge. Last year, vegetation over Kingsbrook was cut down, they cleared the sightline to see that bridge better, but last year, we talked about with Robert, there's an advanced warning system that you could put, where it's a laser activated sign, because if you just put flashing lights on that sign, on that bridge, I don't care what you do, people will come immune to the flashing lights, people that go through there all the time. The advanced warning system works that when it breaks the beacon, then it triggers a light, and you put that up far enough on Front Street, then they have time to turn around on Gilmore and the former car wash parking lot to avoid the collision. That would be activated by campers, Penske trucks, anything that breaks the overhead clearance, as opposed to just flashing lights to sit there and flash all the time. Because if something that sat there all the time, did its job and avoided it, again, three no truck route signs would have avoided a lot of them. I think Robert looked into that, I think it was like ten thousand dollars he had talked about, so.
So is that something, because I would think the railroad has a vested interest in not having trucks hit it, is that something that we could reach out to the railroad that maybe they might be willing to pay for or at least share the cost? It's, it sounds like a good idea in theory.
Well, I don't think the railroad's gonna care, because as Chief Richard said, like, you hit that thing like fully loaded, it's not nice, the bridge isn't gonna move, it's built with two lanes, two tracks on it, like it's never gonna lose, and people hit bridges all across the country every day, as a matter of fact, there's a camera went down and then the one person with the apartment has put a webcam up and they just literally record this one bridge getting hit, and there's a website for it, it gets hit almost weekly.
Well, I guess we have a vested interest then in not having traffic delay by trucks hitting our bridge.
And I don't, GPS is still sending that way, what if it's the alternate truck route? Is that, you have to do something to change that?
I don't know, I actually don't.
So, yeah, Ben, two-part questions, is, is there something that the city has to do that would change Google when you type in your address, I'm sorry, when you type in a destination and it creates? I'm sorry, when you type in a destination and it creates the route? Is there something in, that we have to do on our part so that it comes up as, this is not a truck route, this is?
I haven't had a clue, I've never had to contact the Google or work through them on their systems, how they sort of.
That'd be more of a Department of Transportation question, if someone gives the information out somewhere? No, okay.
Someone does something.
Yeah. So, and then the other part, because you, uh, given us this, by chance, do you have, uh, an idea what this, what costs this type of system?
Well, this isn't a system, this is just the, the layout of signage, and they're kinda showing some alternate power measures they can put in place. So they're showing, you know, it's, this is mainly typically just signage. Uh, there is a flashing beacon light option on top of one of the signs, or a non-flashing signal. Um, so again, as you look from State Street to the Front Street, you know, if you kinda look at that section, we've got, let's say, we've got a, a low bridge ahead sign, and on the bridge itself, a sign that says what the elevation is, what the height is, those are the, as the requirement, so that we meet that. On, on the north side at Main Street, there's a sign that says low bridge three quarters mile ahead, and then right before the stop sign is a, is another warning sign saying low bridge ahead, and then the bridge itself is, is noted. So this is saying that you can do double signage, you can do signage on both sides of the road as an alternate, to maybe get more attention. Uh, you can add, um, the, the post, um, the post reflective strips to help, again, make that sign stand out a little bit more, so you could push some reflective on the post that the sign is on to help make it become more visible from some of the other signage. Maybe, again, try to get them, same like you're saying, something flashy, something, but, I mean, obviously these are all constant, they aren't that flashy, but they're trying to get the attention of the driver to look at that sign as opposed to another sign.
I mean, I agree, I, I think something flashing there, whether I believe it works or not, I think that he's putting something there, uh, would, would help, Mayor?
Well, I respectfully disagree with Alden, because I think we have adequate signage there. There again, we're, we're, government is saying we have to do something when it's, it's the driver's responsibility. The driver, they get their driver's license, they're supposed to know what vehicles they're driving, they're supposed to know the height of their vehicle.
Yep.
So I think we have, it's adequate, what's there now? Uh, I don't think two roof hits last year, uh, four this year, uh, we don't get that many in a year. So I, I think we're stepping in where we should, it's just my opinion.
Thank you for your opinion, Mayor. Uh, please, Chief, I have just one question for Chief real quick, uh, by, just by chance, do you know what the average fine is for a driver that hits it?
I have no idea.
Okay, I was just curious, um, alright, uh, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna follow up with that, do we cite them any tickets for hitting? Typically, those that hit the bridge, are there any citations that come from the city?
It's like anything else, it's the officer's discretion.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, whatever.
Okay.
Alright, if you got a guy driving a motorhome and he's on his way camping and his air conditioner takes off a bridge, depending on the officer, maybe he's gonna ride him, maybe he's not gonna ride him, you know. Somebody runs a Penske truck or, you know, a U-Haul and they hit that. Um, I mean, if you have, and with that being said though, I mean, if you have somebody that's from this area, they deliver it all the way, you know, every time, and they hit the bridge, yeah, definitely, they should get it.
Um, and then the other question I had was, so, you know, in, in, in this, our discussion right now is about vehicles hitting the bridge, and so that's what I addressed. The other conversation, if you guys are gonna be reaching out, Mayor, to the railroad, is what is their timeline to raising the, the Front Street Bridge? If you're gonna have a conversation with them, just to explore what is, cause that was a part of their, what they proposed to us how many years ago? So what does that look like? It doesn't address whether it is a truck route or isn't a truck route, it's, it's marked as non-truck route, we can have a million different signs, but if trucks are not supposed to semi, you know, especially semis, right, are not supposed to be on that, then we could definitely look to increase enforcement too, right? I get it, I get it for a, a motorhome or something like that, but, and the, the problem is too, and I'm just as guilty of it, somewhat, you know. Now we rely on our phones and our navigation to tell us every which way to go, and, and, I mean, you gotta know, especially if somebody's driving a big rig, what their dimensions are, and I would think you'd be paying attention to the, the signage, but.
From what I was told, uh, they were getting the Queen Street tunnel done, and then in the spring they would start on the bridge, and we'll confirm that.
Anastasia? Yeah, the only thing I'd like to say is, uh, I agree with the mayor, I mean, I have a CDL, I still have a CDL. And that's part of my responsibility as driving these big rigs, is to know what you're driving and know what the heights are, and know where your surroundings are. And so at least in my company, if we had an accident, as soon as we had an accident, we went for a drug test. I don't know if that's a federal law or if that's just my company policy, but I, I, I put the blame all on the drivers, they shouldn't know what the hell they're driving if they have a CDL license. Dean? Two questions, well, one question. Ben, can we verify that the bridge signage height is accurate?
Um, I'm sure you could set up a measure.
Well, New York State says the bridge lower than one thirteen feet has to be marked twelve inches below actual clearance. Bridge says ten-ten, actual clearance then should be eleven foot ten.
That's what I was being told, that it's, uh.
It's state law, that's why I'm acting, I'm sorry, it wasn't a question, I'm telling you, that's what it is, that's what it says. But I would question that's eleven foot ten at its lowest point, considering the sign probably outdates some of the repaving, so just as a precaution, on our side, we should probably make sure that it is accurately marked. Um, and then secondly, is the idea is, is, I, I somewhat agree with the mayor on the bridge is there, it's your problem, but it's also interesting that one of the reasons that the city contacted the railroad about raising the bridge was because of the number of vehicles striking the bridge, so that's almost like government stepping in, while the bridge was there, so and even if that raises it up, it's still not gonna provide enough clearance for a tractor trailer. At best your answer would be RV's air conditioner, TV antenna that's up and down. So, but I just, you know, it's, the reason that that was approached was quoted multiple times by Alderman and the mayor about people striking the bridge. So, if we shouldn't do that, then why are we gonna spend the money to raise it? Or not, they're gonna spend the money to raise it, and then does that affect the integrity of the bridge that's, with however they raise it?
Alright, so I, I don't wanna beat this up, but I am happy that we had this discussion, and, um, I'll say that, uh, JR, your first point, uh, checking the height seems to be the best solution out of everything discussed, uh, with the paving and everything, with the state law, with the, uh, s- actual signage that's there, and to protect the city of only itself, maybe we should go and have that measured to make sure that the proper sign is there, is it twelve-two?
The signage on the bridge right now says ten-ten, that's what all the signs state, doesn't, is there two signs up the road?
Yeah.
By sixteen, and also say that listed height?
And so if it is in fact ten-ten, then the clearance should be, what, eleven-ten then?
If the sign says ten-ten, the actual clearance should be eleven foot ten.
Yep, so.
I can tell you that if one's on truck, for me, everybody eleven foot two, but there's not a lot of clearance, definitely.
So, so that may be something right there that, uh, may be coming out of this, so. Um, thank you all for that discussion, and I'm good. Uh, hopefully the city follows up on that and, and checks that, even though, you know, we say we, I heard only a few times with two and four for the accidents over the past two years, but that's six too many in my book. And, uh, I think about the bridge in Minnesota that fell down, that, you know, these bridges, they can, you can hit them with this, that, and the other, and they won't fall, but that bridge fell, so I don't wanna see that in this city, so. I don't have anything else for that topic, uh, approval of committee reports, I have none, uh, make a motion adjourned, negative second?
Second.
Second by recall, in favor? Close, adjourned.
Okay, I'll call together the, um, finance committee meeting for Tuesday, September third. Let's see, all, all the men are present with the exception of Alderman Tanis. We have no meetings available at this minute, so we'll defer that. Unfinished business, we have none, new referrals for consideration. Um, we have the RFP with no bids received, and Mayor, I'll let you take that, or?
Brad's gonna talk about that.
Uh, yes, we had the bid opening, there was no bids. Um, I did reach out to the three firms that we sent the material out to, I did hear back from one of them, they weren't able to submit because they had a subcontractor, uh, back out on them last minute. Uh, so they weren't able to put the package together to submit. They are still interested in the work, um, so just looking for some guidance on kind of where, where we wanna go from here.
So if there's, uh, at least one company interested, do we need to put it back out to bid?
That's one of our options, yes, we could put it back out of bid.
Mm, that's one option, what would be the other option?
Well, this being a professional service, we could, uh, we could hire, we could, I, I believe, and I'll to confirm this, but I believe we can hire a firm to do the work.
Without going out to bid?
Yes, we always like to go out to bid because it gives us, you know, it's competitive then.
What was this for here, I'm sorry?
Brad, you wanna just give an overview of what it's for?
Yeah, inflow and infiltration, stormwater that, uh, infiltrates.
This is to do with the Four Street pump station.
So the scope of the work is to look at, uh, we have three, three pump stations that have the ability to bypass dual waterway. Um, that being Shawment off of Adams Street, uh, Martha Avenue, and South Fork Street. So we wanna look at their main systems, put in the I I specifically in those three main systems, uh, to make sure we can mitigate.
You said Four Street, Martha Avenue, is it?
Uh, Adams Street.
Adams.
Yeah, we call it Shawment pump station.
Shawment?
Shawment, yeah, it's, it's around Adams.
Brad, did, did you hear back from the other two as to, okay. So just went back to you and said, geez, we were interested, but subcontractors kind of backed out, so. So I'm guessing you guys are looking for direction from us as to, I mean, do you have a, a preference for what might be more efficient with, you know, resubmitting, you know, going back out to bid or looking to hire a firm?
I think, uh, uh, if the other two that filled the bid, get back with some Thomas and Brad in a, in a timely manner, and we could, uh, we could, uh, you know, if they're still interested, we could go back out to bid. Uh, if they're not, then I think we better look at, uh, the firm that's interested.
Okay, so where you reach out to them, is that what I'm here to see, you get any comments as to what it is that, and then, um, I don't think we want this to go out too long, so, but our next meeting, so should we put this back on for two weeks?
Uh, yes.
Does that work? Thank you.
Just so you guys remember, Jared's gonna be out in the field in this month with the LEED project.
The North Miami, love you.
So, to say the rest of her, he's gonna be out of the office for most of the time here, between now and maybe two weeks.
Okay, so, I'm, Brad, is it, is it manageable to be able to get somebody?
Yeah, you just want me to reach out to you.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And you can even send us an email, I mean, and kind of let us know, because that'll inform us as to whether or not the RFP are looking to do the bid.
Sure.
Is that reasonable then?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, funding for demolitions, um, I did go and, and I saw, looked at all of them except for one, but we have, um, six twenty-nine South Union Street, three thirty, three thirty Laurel Avenue. And I don't know why they're broken down, but three sixteen Laurel and three thirty North Tent. So.
Uh, so they're broken down, um, the first two, the cleanup is done. Um, so, six twenty-nine South Union Street was the one that the vehicle struck, then.
Months ago now?
Yeah, back in the fall, I think. Um, so we had a contractor emergency demo to structure, but then the rubble sat there, so, uh, we put out an OR, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we put out an OR for the, uh, the owner to clean up the rubble. Um, they did not, so the city has to clean it up, we'll put the, uh, we'll, we'll build a, the owner, uh, do, do the leading route, um, on the taxes to recuperate. So that one was twenty?
Twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety.
Um, and then three thirty Laurel, uh, that was a garage that caught fire, burned pretty extensively. Again, it, it sat there for a while, the OR was out to either repair or demolish it. Um, the owner did not, so again, we say that does not work to make it safe. Um, in the same manner, so those two are down, um, and were made safe, and then there's the other two. Three thirty North Tent, um, that one has collapsed, so if you look in the front door, through the window of the front door, you can see all through the roof. Um, so the roof, it's actually a, got a very small portion of that building, it's three stories. Um, it's a, like a cinder block building, I think, um, at least part of it, and you can see right through the front door all the way through, through, to the sky. Uh, so that one needs to come down, and then three sixteen Laurel, I have not been there, mine.
Same exact thing, uh, and not only can you see, the interior floor has collapsed, and you can see daylight, but the house has actually shifted enough toward even getting pushed open. And you can start to see where sort of like additions are pulling away from the house. And that one has been through the tax bar closure at least twice over the last four years.
Yeah, I didn't look in three ten, uh, or three thirty North Tent, because I was looking and I thought that one looked pretty good, but I didn't look in the door to see that you could see sky, so. And, so I did have somebody ask me though, and the question was, um, on a couple of things, how things were determined, um, because we have a number of houses that seem to be kind of in that same shape, so the question is kind of, how do you determine, cause I, I thought that there would be the red X on there when I went by, but.
So, there's a severe view of property, one of the tenants, I would assess, just because they have, whether it's one slash or two slashes. One slash something simply means it's for the part of it. If they roll up on it, alright, that property's supposed to be vacant, so just take caution. If it has two slashes on it, two slashes means there's definitely a hazard in there, that you shouldn't go in. These two houses have superseded even the two slashes, these are DEFCON one, these need to come down quickly.
Doesn't that still, they shall, they should have still been marked for the label for the public between the time that it was determined and just putting a sign up, and then, I mean, cause they're, I mean, coming to council, there's no guarantee, you still gotta find the funding or whatever in order to.
Three sixteen Laurel is placard here, and three thirty North Tent is placard with the dangerous posts.
Yeah, they both have one.
So they are black.
Well, the other one has the, the X I saw, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just want, so the total for the four were twenty? I just wanted, so the total for the four, were twenty-three thousand seven ninety, or just for the three, because the South Union one was already taken care of?
So that's just for South Union Street. That's what the RFP came back, that the council awarded, was the twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety. Three thirty, or, three thirty Laurel, the garage, came back at sixty-five hundred. The other two, three thirty North Tent and three sixteen Laurel, I have out the RFP right now, so I can bring it back hard.
Okay.
On the, at the seventeen two. So we're just putting those on your radar, we're not actually asking for funding for those two right now.
Okay.
I don't wanna ask for funding until I actually know what the numbers are.
And then, didn't we have a line item for demo? I could've sworn I remember a line item in the budget.
I think it's like twenty-five thousand, once you can let me know, 'cause I, how much is it?
Seventeen five?
'Cause I remember thinking it wasn't a lot to, to demo.
That's enough to get a building that needs to be knocked down to the ground like we did for six twenty-nine South Union. That usually doesn't cover the asbestos, you know, hot cleanup, um, and, and on your way.
So we basically cover one house if we needed to?
Well, each, so, they all three had asbestos, or we don't know?
Well, the first, the two that have already been down, obviously, six twenty-nine South Union had to come down in a controlled manner because structural issues. The last two are gonna have to do the same thing, 'cause you can't get an asbestos survey or in their survey if there's asbestos, so, huh? So you have to treat like the whole thing and do a controlled demolition.
Maybe I missed it, but why is this, we've, we've heard about those houses?
Three thirty North Tent was on the market, but there was never any interior products. And then it just, probably within the last month and a half, the realtor actually called us and said, hey, did you know the roof has shifted? And when it shifted, it took down two floors. So that one came up on our radar, this may need, uh, need demolished. When I overlooked it, yes, it's demolished, it's a dangerous building, and it's a local guy here, so we've been trying to work with him on it. He straight up said, I don't have the funds, I don't know what you want me to do. Three sixteen Laurel has always been on our radar as a proud property. But when we were down there to clean up the three thirty, alright, let's see what else is on the street for these individuals. Um, it's never really looked that bad, until you actually walked up to the door, 'cause we noticed the door was cracked open about two inches. Alright, let's see what's going on here, until you actually walked up and looked inside and realized, okay, it's a lot worse than what we thought it was. Floors have collapsed inside with it, the headers above some of the doors have shifted over twelve inches, within a thirty-six inch span. So, without any tall tale signs, everyone has just been on what we call windshield surveyed. But now it's arisen to the point that...
What's the recourse if the city were to, um, have to demolish this?
As far as trying to recoup them?
Yeah.
One local guy, he has a couple of the properties, uh, hopefully we could transfer it either at Jack Hartford or Mike Morgan, and, uh, Sue and Savely, as well as the lean, uh, put it on a tax code, but Sue and Savely, and attach those properties. Yeah, one on Laurel is out of state, or out of the area.
Yeah, and that one, the one on Laurel has been, I mean, you've had, we've had conversations about that one, because it's been, they sold it a couple of times, and I said, I'm in New York City or something, the rest ones in the ballpark, so that one's kind of been...
Ideally, we would like to get that one down to the land bank, is what the plan always was, but since they've changed the rules to how land banks allow to get property, and now the state dead its end, I don't think we can get it down to the water department. Because it's a pain to get a piece of property to a land bank, now with the new rules, I don't know the places yet.
Alderman Benjamin.
Did, uh, Bill, did we ever get an answer on that when we talked about six twenty-nine South Union Street? I asked back then, and I think you were gonna get with Jack, on asking if we could transfer the tax lien to other properties owned by the same person. 'Cause when we talked about that, John, your question was how we recoup that. That's now vacant property, I mean, they just let it go to taxes, and that's a thousand bucks, we're never gonna get back near the twenty-three thousand that it costs. So the question was asked, you know, did we ever find that out, Bill?
No, I did, Ryan may have an answer on that.
Uh, for this individual who have asked, we have received a civil judgment for the property, and, um, deal we had with the county is if we assign civil judgment to them, because they already have the information to collect, if we assign the judgment to them, they'll make us whole. So we don't even have to go through the collection process, alls we have to get is the civil judgment. And then, uh, as far as three thirty North Tent, or, three thirty Laurel, the reason that that kind of push that to finally knock that garage to the ground, was, uh, those properties have now hit foreclosure, so pretty much said, okay, the owner's given up, it's time to take matter in our own hands. So the bank will end up having to make that tax code whole. We just have to wait until next year.
So I, I have a question, so, so we send it to the county and say we got the judgment, does that mean then the county goes after the landlord for the money for the judgment? I'm trying to figure out, because otherwise, there's no incentive for that landlord to make changes anywhere if there's no financial cost. So does the county then go after the landlord to recoup that money?
They have a couple different options, you have the judgment, and you can either attach to other properties, and then foreclose on, you can do a, a work of execution against any bank accounts. They have their process somehow, they get their money.
Okay.
Alls I care is that they make us whole.
Okay, well, but I care that, that there's a financial cost to a landlord that has routinely not kept up properties. So I wanna make sure that, right, that, because we want our properties maintained, and that is part of changing a lot of the things in the code enforcement to give you guys more teeth with it, so, I just wanna make sure that, that there's some financial consequences for the individual, so, and it sounds like there is through the county. Okay, thank you.
So, just didn't wait for you a few months ago, that code enforcement was gonna do inspections on these rental properties? Uh, or my...
Yes, there was, every...
These are just vacant properties, so there's...
But you're asking, let's put that on for, um, public safety, I think, right? Maybe a, a review of where you guys are at in terms of code enforcement on putting, implementing that rotating, um, review of, I don't know, where to go on city operations, or where to go on public safety?
Don't matter to me.
Well, your point always out, Matt, because right now it's just on change of occupancies. The other part of that law was every five years.
Well...
You wouldn't really...
So you're saying we have to wait five years to initiate it versus starting something now and then saying in five years?
By the end of the year, we'll have to first list out, okay, this, this is who has not done the runs-up within the last six years that we've got the law.
Okay. Okay, so, one year out from that, when we implemented that, we should look to see the first, um, reviews of property coming up? Okay, so, do you remember when that is about?
I'd say April?
April? So, okay, so we should make sure that we kind of put that on, and then you can...
When they do law?
When we said, every five years, that they would be reviewed, with the exception of, there were a couple of exceptions, change of occupancy, or, if there was an individual apartment, multiple, right, in there that was found to be in non-compliance, and if it was in the same building, then you could review all of the apartments within that one, right? So we should make sure that...
You can't check there, including vacant property should be inspected too, to make sure they're safe.
That would fall underneath the, uh, the vacant property legislation, correct, right?
Yeah, and, and, Paul, are you giving permission to do that?
Getting what?
Permission to do that.
Oh. Okay. So we should put that on for May of next year?
All the vacant letters have went out over...
Yeah, yeah, the vacant property legislation, now, not, whether on that same timeframe, where they were all notified.
Yeah, so we focused on that first, we got all those letters out, now we have to focus on doing the, okay, you have, had it done the last six years, let's start with the first batch.
Okay.
But for vacant property, we still have to get permission to go in?
Correct. Well, any property, yeah, we have to...
Well, Ryan, but...
But especially that one, that was a little tougher, 'cause they're out of town, they're going to turn ball malls. I think that first five hundred bucks will probably start to get them on the house.
Kind of circling back to, um, three thirty North Tent, um, do you think, just for public safety, 'cause people do go into vacant buildings, that we should put the X on there?
Yeah, I can stop by the fire department, see if there's a little one on there, I mean, there is a post that's a dangerous building, show me the answer.
It's a white thing, I don't know if people pay, I think people pay attention to a red X, maybe you'll stop them, maybe it won't, but, you know, it could, they could run into the bridge too, so I don't know.
No trucks have a long bridge sign too, but...
That's what I was saying, so, but...
I would hope if you open a door and you can see straight up, and see the, yeah, see the floor, third floor, and the V.
But we hope that people don't run into the bridge, so, you know, maybe if you could look into that and see, selecting the red X on it, that would be...
We have to have one sold.
Thanks. Anything else on these, and then you're gonna come back to us with, when you get the RFPs back, just in terms of...
Yeah, you'll have the for the seventeen two, and add the RFP for the thirteen two.
Okay, okay, perfect. Anything else on this? Okay, committee reports, none, I make a motion to adjourn, negative second.
So, so, the RFPs are for the second two?
The second two, yes.
First two we have to, five hundred and four.
Right, oh wait, say that again.
The first two we have, we do have five hundred and four.
Okay, so, we, we should revisit, let's go back for a second, we, almost out. Um, okay, so, we have twenty-three thousand nine hundred and, or seven hundred ninety dollars and sixty-five hundred. So, looking at, where does that, what was it?
I need thirty thousand two hundred and ninety.
And you have seventeen five, right? Budgeted someone?
For emergency stuff. The only reason I have that...
This is an emergency?
I don't wanna take that line item, 'cause if we get a car into a house, then we can immediately do something about it. And I don't have to come to you and ask you that, hey, I got a little beyond scene right now, there's nothing come down. That's why we're coming to you to ask for the funds, so we're not competing on emergency though.
Because, okay, so you used the other emergency when the car ran into the house to down?
Or if there's a structural fire, or we got a secure property, we can demo on here, so...
Okay.
I'm confused, I'm confused. You have a separate account, does the fire department have a emergency, some funding somewhere?
There, it's a demolition of unsafe buildings, um, it's not in the fire department, budget, it's not in code's budget, it's separate. Fire has budget, code has budget, demolition, unsafe building is like a, tell them, stop right there.
I'm just thinking, why doesn't, if a, a building catches on fire and needs to calm down, why isn't there a line item in the fire department budget for that? Probably what I'm trying to say?
'Cause they use that lineup that he just, uh, you know. And the only difference is, if you just wanted the budget, they move it underneath the fire department, off of the fire department, that would be really, you know, the difference.
Yeah, which is, I'm saying, building is a lineup, and so...
So, in helping us in terms of budgeting and looking at, um, where money can come from, can, you know, I, I don't know, maybe you guys give us, maybe for the last five years, what it has cost us for kind of a cleanup, et cetera, right? For, for annually for the last five years, so that then we can look at when we come to budget next year to say, how much money do we need to be able to demo and clean up, um, buildings? So, and, okay, and when you get the RFP, it's gonna be for the demo and cleanup, correct?
No, the RFP is just for the two demolitions, three thirty North Tent and three sixty Laurel, yes, that is, demoing those two houses and taking everything away when they turn hot. And backfilling when those become a vacant lots.
Okay.
What we're here tonight for is just the funding of two of the very...
Okay, and then mine is if you can give us kind of those numbers for the last five years, and then as we look towards the budget next year, we can hopefully plan differently?
Ryan, just a question, what was, what was the language in that RFP on the six twenty-nine South Union Street? I specifically remember, one bid was much, much lower than the one we went with, but there was something in the language, wasn't one of the bids like seven or eight thousand dollars, and then...
One was two thirds less than...
What was the language that disqualified that one from being awarded the job?
So, one was not qualified per code rule fifty-seven, being certified to do it. The next one of, did not provide the bid bond order guarantee to do it, and then found we put the other.
Okay.
Now, if they submit ahead of time, like we asked them to, then we can also call our reminder, maybe you submit it, but it's...
Okay.
But when they're coming in at the last minute, there's not much we can give.
Okay, there's this question, I just remember there was a huge disparity in pricing.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
So, since we're still here, the six twenty-nine South Union and the three thirty Laurel, both came down early this year, or was it last year?
Uh, six twenty-nine South Union was October twenty-three, was when it was actually packed to the ground.
Okay.
It was cleaned up in May. Um, three thirty Laurel was just cleaned up, uh, maybe mid-August at that.
Mid, okay, 'cause I was gonna s...
'Cause that's when we noticed the foreclosure, we were just like, oh, we gave up, stay there.
I was just curious, because if we know, we knew these were there, we knew that these were gonna have to be paid for, so the Lawrence one, we can scratch, that was August, but the South Union Street, I would've figured that that one would've been made whole at budget time, knowing that it was there, it needed to be paid for, that the money was already slated, take care of it, considering the fact that it's twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, you might as well say. So, it's just kinda hard to believe that that was overlooked or missed, that now, here we are, a few months into the, the next budget, and now we're trying to pay for something from the previous budget, that's all.
What if that unsafe demolition line was used in twenty-three, it wasn't, right?
Just, uh, take the house down, which I think was two or three thousand?
Uh, three hundred, three hundred and fifty.
So then the balance of that would've been the fund balance anyways, correct?
Right, so we should...
I know, I'm just saying, so it's technically still available in this budget, is that difference?
Yeah, it, I don't think it rolls over though, does it? It doesn't roll over and add, it just stays at that amount?
That amount of unused, John, went to the fund, that's right.
Unused fund, yeah, it was on that.
So when the money is unused for that particular line item, it just goes over into the next budget line, and it keeps adding up?
Well, if we go on a deficit, then that would be used to balance out other, other lines.
Right.
But if everything is passed, then everything will... It just goes into the general fund?
Right, it rolls into the general fund, that's what I thought, so, so then when we start the next budget year, we're starting at the, whatever the limit was for, for that year, it was budgeted for that year. Yeah, so, well, that's what I was saying, so from the previous year, if that is there, we should have...
Previous year, and sitting, and sitting in our general fund, or we should've encumbered it?
Yes.
And set it up into a...
That's what I was about to say, we should've encumbered it for that particular, since we knew it was there.
Yeah.
That's what I was going with it.
What did you put up?
Yeah, so before...
So you gotta pay for it, so just, hold on, uh, what, how much do we have? Did we figure out what we're paying for yet, or not?
No, we haven't figured out how we're paying for it, that's the last piece of the agenda, actually, so let's figure out what we're paying for.
What's our contingency? Seventy-seven thousand eleven contingency.
Okay. Well, for...
Wasn't that, six twenty-nine was already awarded, come out of that contingency, correct?
There was a order that I don't think the line item was ever attached to it.
So, okay, I thought we did, we said that it was done, that it would come out of contingency.
And there's no existing capital funds, correct, for demolition? I know for a while that we had, we had a capital fund, we closed it, yeah.
Had a sticky one, I was...
So, I'm here... So I'm hearing we're gonna take it at seventy-seven thousand contingency.
That's my recommendation, contingencies therefore. Um, I would, you know, I will heed caution though, right? Because as much as I respect the fact that the one building may have a skylight, uh, it is a cinder block building itself, you know, I don't know what two buildings, bringing them down essentially hot, is that how they're, they're gonna have to be bid, bid, right?
Yep, controlled demolition.
Controlled demolition, right? You know, maybe you come back at fifteen thousand dollars combined, but I doubt it. Right? And we'll have to reevaluate, wouldn't we get that R, uh, the RFPs back, but-
Well, and that's why we put language, uh, therefore have to get into awarding RFP.
Fair enough. That's my recommendation.
So out of contingency, the thirty thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Okay. Any other comments before, once again?
One last, one last comment, I mean. I think, uh, we're gonna have to take a really, probably, I, I hope the fire chief would, uh, echo this, that, you know, as we move forward, w- w- we need to, um, start budgeting, I mean, you know, the cost to bring down one house was what, twenty-three thousand, twenty-four thousand, you have just seventeen thousand in, in the line item to bring down a dangerous house. You know, when any of these houses in Oleend, if life still exists, I mean, it probably should be closer to a hundred thousand, uh, in, in, in the budget than seventeen thousand, right? That doesn't mean take down one house anymore. So, I, I think come the budget season, which is gonna be here and, and before you know it, um, we would really take a look at probably tripling that, at least if not, probably.
Or we're just paying too much to tear down a house. The house is literally, to tear it down costs more than what the house is worth right now.
That's why I asked what the language was, why that.
And I, well, and is there a better way to do it? Is there, is there, is there anything within our powers as a legislative body? Or are you following New York state rules? What, what is, what is handcuffing us to paying these exorbitant amounts? Is it local law that we have a, an effect on, or is it state law that mandates this?
It kills you, it's called respect.
Which is what?
Which is-
State.
Asbestos, they have, uh-
That's better. Okay, so if the city of Oleend can't say, it's our body, hold your roof, or whatever, I don't know, like, right? We have to follow that law.
Yeah, because usually once you're to that point, you need to get an asbestos surveyor in there. Once in a while, you can have a, get the asbestos surveyor in there and cross your fingers and hope that he doesn't find anything. And your ass can reduce the cost of demolition, and it opens up to who can do it.
Now, just as a rebuttal to that, the only way that we were able to circumvent that in previous years was when the city took ownership, which I don't suggest we do, because then we have no recourse once we take ownership. I don't think we need to get in that business again. At least this way, if we knock property down and the owner has other properties, we can place liens on those other properties. We may get some, recoup some of the, 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 the money, right? But previously, when we took ownership, was we, we sold properties like that to a neighbor for a dollar, and then they took it down, and once, if you take it down yourself, you don't have to follow the, the rules and laws that we have to comply with. And they took it down, they took those properties down significantly cheaper than, than what we had to pay.
So I have, I have a, a thought, um, because lens is gonna give us annually for the last five years what the demo costs and cleanup have been. But speaking of capital projects and this, the county making us whole, would it make sense then to set up a capital project and when that money came in, to put the money into that capital project?
It's not a good idea.
So that we would have that money set aside, and so every time the county made us whole, we would put that money in there and hopefully it would kind of self-plenish and we went-
Yeah, they would, they would, they make us whole during the typical tax period, is that right?
March.
In March, right?
Yeah.
Which we would just have to make sure to earmark to pull that out, right? Along with, is that at the same time we recoup our water bills?
Water and sewer.
Right? And so we're trying to start now putting that money into the proper buckets, right, for water sewer, so same thing. Just earmark, oh yeah, here's, part of that is, is, is for this, and it goes back into the capital fund. I think that's a really good idea.
So we should set up a capital fund for house demolition, cleanup?
Emergency.
Emergency?
Demolition.
Demolition?
Or you leave that list, you just put in the list, uh, zombie capital fund, it's our goal.
Zombie capital fund?
Except I don't wanna mix things up. Are we using that zombie capital fund to pay for s- other stuff right now? We are, right?
So the most services?
Yeah, so I just don't wanna mix.
And if you have a house fire, it's not, it's gonna fall during the zombie, right?
Just demolition, demolition.
That's why I'm trying not to restrict it to that, because if my house just burned, it would take down, it's technically not a zombie property. You just have it as an unsafe or emergency building demolition fund, that would encompass it all.
So can we set up that capital fund then and we'll?
Well, and what would be good too then is if we had, say, say we would increase that in the annual budget to fifty or sixty thousand, and then we don't spend it, we have a place to encumber it at the end of the period, so it just doesn't call into the, the general fund.
So?
And, and so we can maybe build it up to a, a, you know, a decent level.
Tree fund, sidewalk, sorry, sidewalk fund? We, last I remember, we didn't have a lot of applicants. If that money is available, that could very well maybe cover the other two. I don't remember.
Well, I don't think we wanna take that out for, you know, we have until May.
Oh, is it, I, because construction season's about to stop, so by the time we start this back up in March, April, that's a totally different, or do we start it in May? Because the budget here is what, May, May?
Yeah.
So we have what?
June, March.
June one, okay, so you have potentially April, May to do?
March, April, May, technically.
Okay, okay.
A capital fund doesn't comply necessarily with the operating budget though, right? It's its own standalone thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking, but, I'm just thinking of other things that may be out there where we can obtain funding that's sitting there right now that's not being used, but at the same time, I don't wanna take and, and rock people to pay for, you know what I mean? So, I, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I don't, lens, do you have any updates on the sidewalk program?
Hmm, last time I found out, I went like two or three committed.
Yeah.
Could you, could you give us what the current balance is on that? Have a, like-
Because if, because if it's hovering around thirty thousand, then we very well could take at least twenty out. That would be ten for April, May, June, and then the next budget hits and then it's fully funded again, go from there.
You know, there, there, there has been some additional thought on that sidewalk program, and if it is starting to slow down, um, that we open it up, I mean, currently the way it's been written is for residential owner occupied, I believe. Possibly, you know, opening up to commercial businesses or something like that. I mean, at this point, we're all trying to accomplish improving sidewalks, you know? And if, if the residential program's starting to slow down, maybe we could consider, you know, expanding the applicants next season.
Okay, so for the moment, we're gonna pay for it out of contingency, we're gonna set up a capital project in which the monies will go, once we are made whole by the county, into that capital project for-
Yeah. Tiffany, can you get all, get all that?
Yep.
Okay. No committee reports. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Robinson, all in favor?
opposed?
So we-